Thank you, Luke.
I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Goodyear City Council to order for Monday, October 3, 2016, and if you'll please join us and stand with Councilman Holman for the Pledge of Allegiance and the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and for the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Lord, for the freedom to meet, discuss, and decide on issues relevant to quality development in Goodyear. We ask that you continue to protect those who are so instrumental in protecting our freedom and those who dedicate their lives to keep us safe. As we thoughtfully make our decisions, we ask your guidance. We pray this in your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Mayor Lord will not be attending tonight's meeting, and can I have a motion and a second to excuse Mayor Lord for tonight?
So moved. Second?
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Stip and a second from Councilmember Pizzillo. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Okay, for communications, we have one communication item tonight. Assistant to the Mayor Laura Valencia will introduce Government and Regulatory Affairs Manager Rachel Ah. That's kind of odd to have them both again. And Rachel will present council with an organizational overview and update for Cox Communications. Welcome.
Vice Mayor Laura, Councilmembers of council, we have a familiar one. I'm just being here for you. Tonight, Rachel's going to give a little bit of an overview about what's going on with her new role at Cox Communications and Cox's footprint here in our local community. So, without further ado, Rachel.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, members of council. Must say, it's a little comforting to be here on a Monday night, though I don't have to stay till the end, which upsets Lauren a little bit. Thank you for giving me the time to share with you some of the great things that Cox Communications is doing in Arizona and more specifically in Goodyear. A few of you joined us at the league conference for breakfast, and I apologize that some of this will be repetitive, but the story's just too good not to tell again. We'll kick things off with a short video.
Growing state-of-the-art network. That includes 24,000 mi-
The sun rises on a new day in Arizona, and an army of dedicated employees will play their part in serving the communication needs of the 21st century. Nationally, Cox Communications is the third-largest broadband and cable provider and is proudly family-owned. In Arizona, Cox is the largest broadband provider and an important economic engine. It generates an annual impact of more than $1.1 billion by providing voice, data, and video services to more than 1 million residential and business customers. Cox accomplishes this by employing more than 3,100 highly-skilled professionals, making it the third-largest private-for-profit employer in the state. Cox is also a major contributor to communities it serves by purchasing products and services for minority, women, or LGBT-owned businesses, and generating more than $74 million in annual tax revenue for state and local governments, dollars that help to educate our children and pave our roads. Cox Communications is a technology innovator with successes that include a robust and growing state-of-the-art network. That includes 24,000 miles of cable and fiber optics, and $150 million invested in new infrastructure, cutting-edge speed, an 800% increase in internet speeds, and 10 gigabit service available to businesses, and award-winning service, named number-one Arizona broadband provider eight times, and the recipient of 31 JD Power Awards. And we have no plans of slowing down. In Arizona, 1 gig internet service will be available to homes throughout the metropolitan Phoenix area by the end of 2017. Cox is committed to a connected future that's within everyone's reach. In Arizona, it makes low-cost internet available to more than 500,000 low-income schoolchildren through the Connect to Compete program. Cox Communications is committed to the communities it serves in many other ways. Annually, it provides more than $17 million in cash and in-kind support to nearly 400 community and nonprofit organizations. And its employees are equally generous. An amazing 80% participate in charitable giving, and they spend more time volunteering than employees of almost any other company in the state. For more than 20 years, Cox Communications has been an important economic engine, a technological innovator, and community leader. In the 21st century, Cox will continue to provide access to the advanced technologies essential for a healthy economy and vibrant community. Cox Communications: Creating the Future Today.
I'm always proud to show our impact in Arizona and to remind people that Cox is a family-owned company. As a matter of fact, Cox was started by James M. Cox, whose ambition was to own a newspaper. And so in 1898, he purchased the Dayton Evening News, and his success with that newspaper led him into public service, where he subsequently became Ohio's first three-term governor and the 1920 Democratic nominee for president. After losing the election to Warren Harding, Governor Cox focused his attention on growing his media business, which is now run by James Kennedy, Governor Cox's grandson. One of the things that makes me most proud to be a Cox Communications employee is the focus on community service and involvement. Since the beginning of 2016, Cox volunteers in Phoenix alone have volunteered over 18,000 hours in their communities. And in Goodyear specifically, Cox volunteers from Public Affairs, Union Hills, and the Surprise Service Center traveled to the Haciama River Preserve in March to assist with the Water Investigations Program for a group of 126 graders from Goodyear's Copper Trails Elementary. And you saw part of that in the video there, they were walking through the riverbed. And this project was done in partnership with the Nature Conservancy and Arizona Project Wet to combine STEM information in a way that is both effective and fun for children. Another great program we have at Cox is our Cox Charities. Cox Charities is committed to building, strengthening, and investing in Arizona's communities by raising and granting funds over and above the company's charitable giving to support nonprofit organizations that share Cox's focus on youth education and technology. Goodyear's New Life Center has received a Cox Charities grant in the past, and we'll find out soon if they were awarded one again this year. Cox was also a sponsor of the Tale of Two Cities Festival this year, donating funds and charging stations, but more importantly, promoting our Connect to Compete program in the community. 30% of all Americans risk becoming increasingly isolated from contemporary life because they lack internet service and the skills necessary to use it effectively. But since 2012, more than 160,000 people have been connected to the internet through our Connect to Compete efforts. Notably, more than half of low-income families who benefit from discounted internet access report seeing their children's grades improve. And a 2015 survey of Cox Connect to Compete customers shows 40% of parents say their own communication with schools has improved, and nearly 50% of them say that their children's interest in school has increased. We are always looking for ways to promote our C-to-C programs, so if you have any ideas for getting the word out, please do not hesitate to reach out to me to discuss it. And I've left some flyers with Lauren, and she'll put them in your boxes so you can have one to take with you as you speak to school leaders. As you are likely aware, we just completed our effort to transition all of our channels to a digital format. This was an important step in updating our technology in order to provide our customers with faster internet speeds as they continue to require more bandwidth. As we continue to make network improvements, we will have the ability to deliver increased internet speeds to your residents. I would like to take a moment to thank you and all of your staff members for your patience and understanding during this process. We know that there still may be customers who require updated equipment, and if you begin to hear from them, please direct them to me, especially winter visitors who may have been gone during the transition and the communications during that time. As they get back into town, they're going to see a message on their screen. So if you hear from them, please let them connect them to me. That concludes my presentation. Thank you again for your time tonight, and please never hesitate to reach out to me if there's anything that I can do for you or your residents.
Thank you very much. Okay, now is the time for citizens who would like to address the city council on any non-agenda items. Are there any speaker cards? Is there anyone from the audience who wishes to speak on a non-agenda item? And I see no hands. Okay, now we're going to move on to the consent agenda, item six. Will the city clerk please read the consent agenda item, 6.1 by title only?
Item 6.1, through the round minutes from a special meeting, a grateful meeting held on September 12, 2016.
Does anybody from the public wish to remove this item from the consent agenda? See no hands. Does anyone on the council wish to remove this item from the consent agenda? No? Do I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda?
So moved. Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Osborne and a second from Councilmember Holman. Can we have a roll call vote, please? Councilmember Osborne?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Loretano?
Aye.
Passes 6-0. Okay, now we're going to move on to the business agenda. I would like to remind council to refrain from asking questions until the staff presentations are complete and there is a motion on the table. So we'll move to 7.1. The first item on the business agenda is a public hearing for the Infrastructure Improvement Plan Audit, and we're going to open the public hearing. And Controller Rebecca Chitwood will present.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and members of council. We are here tonight to present the Improvement Plan Audit and to accept the Infrastructure Improvement Plan Audit. For ARS 946305G2 and per the city ordinance, 9813B, in lieu of an IIP committee, we decided to go for a biannual certified audit of the municipality's land use assumptions, infrastructure improvement plan, and the development fees. The biannual certified audit reviewed the period of August 1, 2014, through June 30, 2016. The ARS statute had no specific guidance regarding the audit. We conducted this through an agreed-upon procedure established by the audit firm and the management of the city. We are the second city to perform this audit. Yuma was the first. Since we have started our agreed-upon procedures, other cities have reached out to Heinfeld and Meach, such as Earl Valley, Tempe, Surprise, Peoria, and Eloy, and they are planning on doing very similar procedures to what we had performed. The procedures that we performed include analysis of progress of the infrastructure improvement plan, comparing projections in the IIP versus the actual results. Heinfeld and Meach reviewed a sample of the receipts and expenditures of development fees for each project in the plan, and in the report, they listed one finding, and it was that projections and populations were slightly lower than what was expected in the plan. I'm going to pass over to Jill Shaw from Heinfeld and Meach so she can discuss a little more of the procedures that they followed.
Thank you, Rebecca. Vice Mayor Loretano, council members, thanks for having me here tonight to present the report. As Rebecca mentioned, this report is being issued in conjunction with the Infrastructure Improvement Plan. The new fees that went into effect as a result of the new legislation, those new fees started August 1, 2014, so because this is a biannual report, we're now here two years later, and as Rebecca mentioned, cities throughout the state will be taking similar measures to be in compliance with this statute. This report was done as an agreed-upon procedures. We are currently engaged, Heinfeld and Meach has, to conduct the city's financial statement audit in accordance with auditing standards, but this report was structured different as an agreed-upon procedures engagement. So what that means is that we met with city management, both in the Finance and the Development Services Department, and developed some procedures and agreed upon some procedures that we all felt would ensure compliance with the statute as well as be in compliance with the overall intent of the statute. So as a result of performing those procedures, we have issued our report that you have seen. And one of the unique things about an agreed-upon procedures engagement is that the only findings in the report are exceptions to those procedures. So for example, one of our procedures was to review a sample of expenditures out of those impact fee funds, and there are no findings regarding that because we didn't have any exceptions to that procedure. So the one finding that is noted, it relates to the difference between projected permit and other important land use assumptions such as population and those sorts of things, how they differed from projected or differed from actual amounts. And then you're seeing some of those differences in projections. But I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have about the report or procedures that were performed.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any speaker cards? No, Vice Mayor. Would anyone from the audience like to speak? See no one. We're going to close the public hearing. And can I have a motion and a second to accept the Infrastructure Improvement Plan Audit?
So moved. Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Campbell and a second from Councilmember Holman. Open for council discussion? Looks like we have no discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're going to move on to item 7.2 on the business agenda, and it's a public hearing to consider the rezoning of approximately 40 acres of city-owned property. We're going to open the public hearing. And Planner 3 Steve Corecchia will present.
Vice Mayor, council members, thank you. This is a city-initiated rezoning of property that the city has owned since 2003. It's approximately 40 acres located here at Indian School and Cotton Lane. This site is the former site of the Duncan Farms family agribusiness that was in operation approximately like 1991 to 2001. And again, the city has owned this property since 2003. The surrounding area is generally PAD with an industrial focus. We have the Palm Valley 303 basically surrounding the property from the north, wrapping around the east, the south, and to the west. To the north is a 10303 business park, again, an industrial-focused PAD. The general plan designates this property with a future land use of industrial. It also has Luke-compatible land use overlay over the property, and that overlay basically encompasses all the areas within accident potential zones and inside the 65 decibel noise contour. And that overlay is generally that the focus of that overlay is protect Luke Air Force Base. It governs the development, future development of properties under the overlay area. Zoning of the property currently right now, it's a mix of ag and C2. C2 is this piece here at the hard corner. And again, surrounding it, you can see generally it's PAD zoning surrounding this piece of And this one exhibit is accident potential zones, and you can see the piece of property right here. It's right under APZ 2 for Luke Air Force Base. The rezoning is to go to I1 with a PAD overlay, and the purpose of the rezoning is to increase the marketability of the property. The PAD overlay accomplishes several things for us. It will allow the property developed with the I1 uses, but will also restrict those uses to those prohibited by Luke Air Force Base since the property is within accident potential zone. So that PAD now will restrict those uses to only those allowed by Luke. It will increase the building height from 50 feet, which is currently allowed in I1 zone, to 75 feet. And also for design consistency, it will tie the development of the property to the design guidelines and basically the signage for the surrounding Palm Valley 303 PAD. Luke Air Force Base, they did review this proposal. They did find that it would not negatively impact their flying operations at the base. We did provide notice for this public hearing. Today, staff has not received any public inquiries on this request. Staff does find the rezoning is consistent with the general plan. It is compatible with this surrounding area and also compatible with the flying operations at Luke Air Force Base. Planning and zoning commission, they considered this item at their September 21 meeting. They unanimously recommended approval of this to the council. As said, staff and planning commission, we are recommending approval of this rezoning request. That concludes my presentation. Available for any questions.
Thank you. Are there any speaker cards? No, Vice Mayor. Would anybody like, from the audience, like to speak? See none? We'll close the public hearing. And will the city clerk please read Ordinance 16-1337 by title only?
Adopt Ordinance 16-1337, rezoning approximately 40 acres of city-owned property located at southwest corner of Cotton Lane and Indian School Road from the AG Agriculture, Roll, and C2 General Commercial zoning districts to the I1 Light Industrial zoning district with a planned area development overlay, amending the zoning map of the city of Goodyear, providing for corrections, severability, and effective date and penalties.
Thank you. Can I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Osborne and a second from Councilmember Pizzillo. Open for council discussion? Councilmember Campbell?
Steve, I have a question on the use list, number 11. Why was that left in when 10 was taken out? It's on the first page of the use list for my attachments. I'm sorry, I don't know where it is. Yeah, number, you took out number 10, but you left number 11. So one is a dispensary and one is a growing area. So I thought we were changing from a farming area to maybe a manufacturing area, not another growing area for marijuana.
Vice Mayor, council members, basically when we work with Luke on this list, basically 10 is more of a retail, more of assembly, where you're bringing people to the location. Where they really didn't see, from Luke's perspective, they didn't see a problem with 11, basically because it was just farming, something growing, so you didn't have the concentration of people. So from Luke's perspective, they had no problem with 11 staying in.
Do we really want that that close to sub-zero?
Mayor, council, Vice Mayor, council members?
Yes.
The list was basically just from Luke's perspective. If council wanted to look at something else, that's-
Well, I have a problem with that being in there for that area personally. I understand why Luke would say they would rather have a farming area than a dispensary area because people would be in there, and that was the concern of not having an area where there would be a lot of people. I think in the flight zone, I mean, this is what I'm assuming. But if this particular document is going along with us rezoning it, I have a problem leaving 11 in, whether it's cultivation or not. I just don't think that's the area we would want that, and that would be a loophole for someone to come in and say, now that you've rezoned it, I could do that, and I just don't want to jeopardize the 303 corridor because it's such an important redevelopment area and an area that we're very hopeful will make us very successful as a city personally. That's just my opinion.
Now, does anyone else have an opinion or a question? Okay, go ahead, Councilmember Pizzillo.
There's probably a question for the attorney. Question for the attorney. If hypothetically, this became legal, and since it's zone light industrial and somebody would actually come in for an application for number 11, would we have any rights to turn it down?
Vice Mayor, if it's a principal permitted use, it's not going to come in front of the council anyway. It's already zoned.
Okay, so-
Answer would be no.
Okay, so wouldn't come-
I do think we have additional, well, no, we have additional requirements for medical marijuana cultivation that require some certain requirements, security and that sort of thing, but that may go away if the state-
Well, that's my point. If it's growing and you have it on here in the light industrial, then they could actually, if I'm hearing you correctly, could actually, if it became legal, actually grow and would have never come back before, if they bought the land.
Yeah, if the law changes, though, that may in fact negate most of the regulations anyway. I'd have to do some more research on that. I haven't read the proposition.
Is this something we can take out if we all agree to take it out, or do we need an amendment to the motion?
I was actually just looking to see whether this chart is subject to the ordinance or not, or if it's a standalone document. Steve, is this incorporated into the ordinance? Or I'm not seeing it is necessarily.
Vice Mayor, council members, the purpose of the list was more of an exhibit for Luke Air Force Base, something that we worked on. Basically, we tied the PAD overlay to the use table in state statute. So that was the purpose of this document. This document is not part of the ordinance.
If it's not part of the ordinance, then could we take out that use? Or do we need a motion from council to take it out of this document just so it's not there? If it doesn't bother Luke, can't we make it more restrictive, I guess? And Councilmember Stip? Sorry, I just jumped in. I was like-
That's my follow-up. I don't, if I remember the discussion when this first rolled out in 2010, we have pretty tight parameters in what we can deny, the cultivation and the dispensaries in the legislation, but the cultivation piece, we just can't take it out and say we don't want it. We have to have, no, we can't.
No, we're talking about one piece of land here.
Right.
As opposed to an ordinance of general applicability. And it's our land for that matter. I think that's a little bit different question as opposed to zoning it out.
But if we sell this land, then what?
Well, you're going to have the restriction that goes along with it.
That's what I'm saying. So now we're going to take something that we self-impose, and we're going to restrict it on land that we were selling that now potentially is not proper. I don't know how to say it.
Well, but you haven't zoned it out.
You know where I'm going with that?
Yeah, what's that?
You see where I'm going with that?
I see where you're going with that.
Well, how about letting us in on where you're going with that? Because I don't understand what we're trying to talk about here. Do we have the authority to do it or not? We own this land. It's ours.
We do, it's land. I'm trying to see from the ordinance whether or not you have that authority. So you can give me one minute here.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, because I think what I'm getting from you is we may be able to do that because it's our land and we're not saying the entire city, ordinance that covers the whole city, just our parcel.
That would be the argument.
Uh huh.
Is there any other comments while he looks that up?
Well, the, the reverse argument of that is we're going to, we're going to impose that on our land right now, and then we go to sell it. When we sell it, this will become part of that parcel. That, this will be part of that zoning. Now, the new landowner has had their rights restricted by our action that we took on our own property. And that's, the question is, does, are we able to legally restrict our own? We can restrict our own, but when we go to sell it, are we, are we pushing that on the new owner? And quite honestly, I think based on some previous discussions that we've had, I don't know that this is even a, that this is even worth having a discussion about. If we think we know we're going to potentially sell it, and we think we know who's going to buy it, it might be a moot point.
Councilmember Osborne?
Well, on a different note, I have to say that I'm very, very pleased about going forward and making a change, because I remember when I was on P&amp;Z in 2003, when the city took the steps to protect Luke Air Force Base by purchasing this area. And you know what? That was the right thing to do. And here we are, 13 years later, having the ability to, to see change and to see, you know, great things happen in there. So I'm pleased that, that we're, you know, taking these steps. As for the cultivation area, well, I, I remember, I understand the conundrum here. And I, I don't want it in my city, but that's just me. So whatever it has to be, I understand legally, we, we want to do the right thing.
Anybody else? Councilmember Campbell, do you have anything else?
No.
Oh.
Back to the initial question, we're adopting it as the overlay. I, I thought we were just trying to adopt, amend the ordinance, which you can't amend the ordinance through this specific action. Yeah, since you're adopting the overlay on top of it, I think you could make an exception and strike, strike 12, or strike 11.
Would I do that by, by offering an amendment to the motion?
Amendment, that's correct.
Okay. Madam Vice Mayor?
Yes, yes, Councilmember Campbell.
Big poo talk today. I would like to move that we strike number 11 out of the use list.
Is there a second?
Second.
And just jumping in, perhaps to address your concern, Councilmember Stip, we could always put a deed restriction if we sold the property and maybe cure that, either other issue.
And so, just looking at the city clerk, so now we take a roll call on this, or just a yes or no?
Just voice vote.
On the amendment, okay. So for the amendment presented by Councilmember Campbell to strike stipulation 11, all in five favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Are you an aye or nay?
Aye, aye, opposed.
Oh, okay.
He said no.
Sorry, I couldn't hear you down there.
It's okay.
Okay, so we've got that. Now we have the, can I have a, sorry, we did the motion and the second, any, no further discussion? And can I have a roll call vote?
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Campbell, Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Aye.
Councilmember Osborne?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lortano?
Aye.
Passes 6-0.
Okay, so now we're going to move on, just stay up there, huh? To 7.3. And the next item on the business agenda is to consider approving the preliminary plat for Paseo Place Parcel 2. And Steve Caretti will present again.
Vice Mayor, council members, this is a preliminary plat for Paseo Place, and we're located at Yuma Road, 183rd Avenue here. This is Perryville here. This is one of the properties in West Goodyear. Surrounding Paseo Place, we have parcel one of Paseo Place here, Pradera, Los Ventanas, La Privada. Over here, we have existing canyon trails, and then over here, another West Goodyear, La Jolla Vista. Properties approximately 80 acres. Preliminary plat proposes 214 single-family lots. Zoning is R16, approved back in 2006. They did get a preliminary plat approval in April of 2015. That approval did expire prior to the developer submitting a final plat. So this plat is basically that same plat that was before you in 2015. No changes. We also have not had any changes to the zoning subdivision regulations or engineering design standards. So this basically is a reapproval of that plat that was previously before you. The reason we're doing this is just because the plat expired. They need to get it reapproved before submitting a final plat. P&amp;Z considered this at their September 21st meeting. They did recommend approval. There was no public inquiry or opposition voiced to the project at the meeting. Staff and the commission, we are recommending approval, subject to the stipulations in the staff report. With that, Vice Mayor, I'm available for any questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Vice Mayor.
Would anybody from the public like to speak? Seeing none. Can I have a motion in a second to approve the preliminary plat for Paseo Place Parcel 2, subject to the stipulations?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Pizzillo and a second from Councilmember Campbell. Any council discussion? Yes, Councilmember Pizzillo?
Is this part of the West Goodyear agreement, same properties? Is it tied to that? So the owner of this property has agreed to all of the preli, or, do you want to come up, Rebecca? Just for a second. So the owner of this parcel has agreed to all the layouts or the requirements that we have for all those properties, the core agreements?
Yes, absolutely. Paseo Place 2, there's also a Paseo Place 1, and both have had their development agreements come before you in the last couple of months.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Anyone else? Yes, Councilmember Osborne.
Thank you. To that agreement, I guess maybe I'm being very sensitive to this, but, you know, we're currently in the study for where the next fire stations are going to be held. And I thought this is certainly one of those areas of timing and where, if now and when and all of that. So correct me if I'm wrong, but, you know, I read through all the stipulations, I read through all the, and I do not recall the development agreement, and I know as many times as we've seen that. My concern is back to fire safety and obviously, you know, the safety of our future citizens there. And so I'm wondering if part of our conversation needs to be taking place after we know the outcomes of that study, to see what we're dealing with, with this whole area. That's just my concern. And, and I don't know, that's, that's where I am on this, councils. I'm, I'm concerned about that, you know, and there may be things that are in place, but I don't know that, that we're there yet on coverage. And so that's what my worry is. I'd love to have some information better, to make me feel better at this.
Okay. Anybody? Sorry, Rebecca, somebody. Paul, manager, someone. How does this fit in with the fire station study, I guess?
This area would certainly be included in the fire station study. West Goodyear and the developments therein will be included.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and Council. From a timing perspective on the fire station study, we're looking, echo, sure, well, looking like we'll, we'll probably get something in front of you guys on the 12th of December is what we're scheduled to have. The actual study should be in our hands just prior to the Thanksgiving break, but presented before you guys on the 12th of December. As far as the development agreement, I think that's why Christopher's here.
Vice Mayor and Council, I was just going to indicate that this plat that's before you tonight would be served by existing fire station, I believe 184, which is some 2.75 miles away with a response time of six to eight minutes. So within our current capacity, it does have the ability of being served. And as we go through that fire station study, additional capacity improvements would be evaluated and, as West Goodyear begins to develop. So fundamentally, we are excited that Paseo Place is moving through the process, and I hope that answers your question in regards to fire, fire service.
Thank you. Chief, can I ask, in this area, is this where we're really utilizing our neighbors for coverage because of the automatic aid or mutual aid? Is that happening over here quite often?
Not, no. More specifically, the calls are coming out of 184. They have been seeing a significant increase in call volume year over year over the last three to five years. We're defining our area of West Goodyear as west of Cotton, north to I-10, south, we've actually been dropping further south to West Broadway to pick up a, a larger piece of call line that's happening in those neighborhoods down there, and then as far west as Perryville. So a little bit bigger of a first due area, as, as it were, but 184 is covering that area out there.
Okay, thank you.
And Councilmember Campbell?
Well, do we have any idea when they're going to build, or is this just extending it again, and we'll just, I mean, and, and do you have any idea why they missed getting it extended before it expired? Don't they normally try to keep it from expiring?
Yes, ma'am, they do. Work very diligently to keep it from expiring. There was a delay, I believe, during the extension of the development agreements that working with them kind of precluded that from proceeding forward. They've also been very diligently working with RID on, on the drainage going through there. So I know that that's been a, a, a challenge that we have all worked with our outside agency partner to help solve, so that, I believe, also contributed to that. But in terms of their schedule moving forward, I know that the applicant is here, our applicant's representative here, Ms. Dawn Fortuna is here, and she would probably be more educated in the schedule than, than we are.
Okay. If you could come up and, and give your full name.
My name is Dawn Fortuna. I'm a project manager with Rick Engineering. As we've talked about, there's been some challenges with RID and trying to work out the timing with that. And so actually, the city was very gracious and helped us facilitate a meeting, not just with us, but with some of the other developers to try to move things forward. And this particular project, both parcel one and parcel two, are kind of at the end of the line, so there's not as much of a sense of urgency. But I do know that Melkor is very committed, and they are working on directly with RID to see if they can come up with some kind of compromise. Some of the challenges are their approvals expire. And so Melkor wants to be sure that when plans are approved, that there won't be any surprises as they go forward. So I know that they've been working directly with both RID and their consultant who prepares their plans. And hopefully, actually, all of our plans are in for parcel two right now for review. The only reason that the city hasn't started reviewing them is because we're trying to work through this with RID.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Any other on the side? I, I just have a quick question to follow up, and he read my mind as Paul stands up there.
Hi. How are you?
The growth in the, the growth that's here and these PADs that have already been set, is that all taken into consideration in the fire study? Like the future growth? I just want to...
Oh, yeah. So part of the study, the first week they were here, they did spend some time with development services in also looking at the general plan and to really understand how the growth is happening, the locations of the growth, both south of Ray Road, Rainbow Valley area, and then also in the West Goodyear section. So we've been working really closely with Katie and Christopher on this process.
Thank you. That was, that was my question. I think everyone needs to hear that it's been considered, and just because it's coming here tonight, doesn't mean it hasn't been considered for the study.
Correct.
Thank you. Does anyone have any further questions? Okay, then we will take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, now we're on to 7.4. The next item on the business agenda is to consider approving the purchase of various fire department equipment as part of the supplemental budget process. And Deputy Chief, Fire Chief, Tim Wayne will present.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and Council. Thank you to my lovely assistant, Chief Green. Department stands before you, asking for the approval and purchase of mine safety, MSA, SCBA's, associated equipment, Bluetooth enhancements, inventory tracking system as part of the overall supplemental process. Funding mechanism, important point out, then in your initial slides that you received, stated CIP purchase of SCBA's. It's not a CIP purchase, it's a supplemental purchase. This is over the course of three years. In fiscal year 14, we were approved for $300,000. Fiscal year 15, $300,000, then in fiscal year 16, $322,000 for a total of 300, or 922,000. Of that, we've already spent $78,000 roughly, because in that first year, our air compressor that fills our bottles was unable to be repaired, and it cost a lot of money to get fixed, so we were able to get that purchase early on in the process. Status of our equipment, they're currently 15 years old. I mean, in terms of SCBA's, that's a long time and probably well overdue. They're beyond their lifespan and currently don't meet NFA 1981 recommendations. As you know, they're subjected to harsh environments and don't really hold up very well, so we're excited about this opportunity. As I mentioned, the air compressor was already purchased as in need of significant repairs. So our evaluation process, pretty intensive process. We looked at three air packs, Scott, Avon, Avon, and MSA. And over the course of six-month period, we put those packs through a pretty intensive test, where all of our members had the opportunity to, to evaluate those on a variety of categories, and those ranging from, from donning and doffing, to comfort, to range of motion, face peace, emergency procedures, communication, ease of use, and general impression. And out of all those categories, it was a clear choice. MSA rose to the top in each and every one of them. There's undisputed that that was what the membership have chosen as the very best pack. So it is our recommendation that the department move forward with the purchase of MSA G1 SCBA's, adding Bluetooth capability to our radios, and air pack, and inventory tracking system. So the purchase of the compressor left the balance of $850,000. With the 92 SCBA's that we're looking to purchase, that's $753,704, with the remaining balance of $96,903. So we'd like to take that additional money, that leftover money, and, and provide our air packs with the ability to use a Bluetooth capability that when we first wrote the supplementals, Bluetooth wasn't even a part of these SCBA. So a new feature that really increases communications and improved firefighter safety on, on the fire ground. So along with that, with the sheer volume of, of inventory that we'll receive and the amount of money that we're spending on that, we're also requesting a $5,000 amount for a tracking device, inventory tracking device for these, for these air packs. We are really excited about this purchase and this advancement in technology and improved safety for, for our membership, and we appreciate the continued support that you've provided us. It's important to note that the rep from United Fire, who provided the visual aids for us tonight, is, is here in the audience as well. So with that, I'll stand with it for any questions.
Thank you very much. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Vice Mayor.
Would anybody from the audience like to speak? And again, seeing none. Can I have a motion and a second to approve the fire department's $789,768 purchase of 92 self-contained breathing apparatus, Bluetooth upgrades to radios, and an inventory tracking program? And authorize the city manager or designated to execute any contracts or other necessary documentation, including budget transfers and authority to carry out the intent of the purchase?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Stip and a second from Councilmember Campbell. Is there any, open for council discussion? I see, Councilmember Pizzillo?
Just a gentle comment, I'm glad you're getting the tools you need to do the job.
Thank you, sir.
And Councilmember Campbell?
Well, the Bluetooth capability is absolutely critical to keep our fire personnel safe. And I want to, I'm excited that we, well, I'm excited that we all work together to put this money aside so that we could do this purchase because this equipment is very, very expensive. But we want the best for our fire department because we want to save their lives as well while they're saving others. So, thank you very much for bringing it forward, and I'm sure it's very heavy to wear.
Yes, they are. They are designed a lot better than they used to ergonomically and use, they are, like I said, state-of-the-art technology. That Bluetooth technology is something that didn't happen a couple of years ago, and MSA is the only one that offers that piece of technology. So, we're excited about what that does for us on the fire ground and overall proved firefighter safety.
Well, I think it's a great idea, and it goes back to we need to take care of what we have, and that includes our personnel. So, thank you very much. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. Now, we're going to move on, I think it's to our last item on the business agenda, and that is to consider authorizing a council member to serve as acting mayor while the mayor and I are out of town from October 9th to October 11th, 2016.
Like to make a motion?
I didn't even get to say, may I have a motion? You're right ahead. And we will, Councilmember Pazillo?
Like to make a motion that we appoint Councilmember Osborne to fill that role?
And do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Pazillo and a second from Councilmember Holman to appoint Joanne, Councilmember Joanne Osborne as the acting mayor from October 9th to October 11th of 2016. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you.
And now, we're done with the business agenda. We're going to move on to informational items. Does the council have any comments, commendations, or reports on current events? We'll start with Councilmember Pazillo.
You know, it was, over the weekend, I guess the weather didn't totally help us out there on the, what was it, the art event that was over at the ballpark? But I was able to bring the girls over there on Sunday, and they had a blast. They were painting skateboards, and I saw, you know, Garleen. And they were able to paint a little silver plaque that's going to be part of a big overall piece that they're going to put together honoring the veterans. So, again, it wasn't probably the numbers that they would hope because of the rain, but they, it was, they put on a really good event there for the kids to see the art and some participation in some of the events there, and they just loved it. So, again, a tip of the hat for the Parks Department. You did a great job of getting that organized. I wish you would have had better weather, but you did a good job, and thank you.
Councilmember Stipp, do you have anything? Okay, we'll just go, Councilmember Osborne? I was just going to go down the line.
Oh, I just wanted to give some congratulations to the Southwest Valley Chamber because they had a very unique breakfast last week, and it was on cybersecurity. And it was quite eye-opening. Something to feel good about is that actually the state of Arizona is in the very top tier of fighting cyber crime in the nation. And so, that was a great thing to say for our state. As a citizen, as a, and a business owner, I went, holy crap, over the stuff that they can do, you know, hacking into stuff and the dark web. And, you know, that was a little intimidating to listen to and watch. But, but overall, it was, you know, to have the stature of people that came as a panel and to discuss, that was really good. And I know that a few of us were at Burlington Factory for their, for their opening, and good luck to their business.
Councilmember Campbell?
Well, I returned Saturday night from going to Madison, Wisconsin to attend the National League of Cities Leadership Seminar, and it was probably the very best leadership fellowship program that I have attended in the six years that I've been going back and forth. I've got some great ideas that I'm going to share with our city manager on our one-on-one concerning our wellness park. I've found other cities who have done something similar, probably not to the grand scale that we are going to do. But I've got some wonderful contact information and things to share. I've got some new grant possibilities that I got all the information from, and I'm looking forward to hosting the NLC group when they come to our city on October 13th.
Councilmember Holman?
Well, I'm going to be a little bit repetitive because I was able to go yesterday to the Art is Alive program. And I wanted to commend them because not only did they have things for Joe's grandchildren to do, and Joe to do if he chose to, because there was an adult section where you could do hands-on activities as well, but they also had set aside a place for people that were not as mobile as others to do their art program, an art piece. And I just wanted to share with you.
There we go. It's very nice.
Show and tell.
Very nice.
This was what, they let me do more than one piece, but I, of course, chose red, white, and blue, which shouldn't come as a surprise to anyone. And I just wanted to say that that thoughtfulness, they covered the full spectrum of people who would be attending the event. And it was true. Unfortunately, there were vendors that had to leave because of the rain, and they had pieces that would be destroyed by getting wet. And so, they did have to leave. But I want you to know personally, I tried to make it lucrative for the vendors that did stay. It was, I, they were good, they were class act. It was, it was a very nice event.
And I would have to agree, I attended that also. And they also had the Cora Vet Show on Saturday. Wow, there were some nice cars there if anyone made it out. But I think more important, they just could not give more kudos to the city staff and to the ballpark staff and how great and cooperative they were. So, that was really great to hear. We also, I think everybody here attended the Burlington opening. And they actually gave $7,000 to local Goodyear schools. They have a program, which I did not know about, but that was really great. That's, it's already been divvied up. But we have to let our schools know to look at Burlington because there isn't a grant opportunity there for our schools. So, I think that's something that they all should know. And then, I think just about everyone here also attended the Estrella Homeowners Association meeting up in Estrella to see what was going up there. So, it was very eventful.
Excuse me, I just wanted to let you know that Charlie and I nearly tangled with a rattlesnake going back to our car. It was proof positive that we are in the desert.
Wow.
Call the fire department, they'll get it away for you.
Wow. Wow.
Okay, does there any, does the city manager have anything to report?
Yes, Vice Mayor and Council, thank you for the comments on the Art is Alive Cultural Festival. And just for the record, there were about 1,500 in attendance. I don't know how that compares. But of that, and it's interesting, there were 130 artworks from the youth art show, and that included both our, the high schools from Stray Foothills and Desert Edge, along with the Follow You Art Junior Program. And thank you for recognition for staff, ballpark staff, and Police Department in particular, but along with the Arts and Culture Commission that supported. And thank you for those that were able to attend that on council. And then the other, as I understand, Councilmember Pazillo's granddaughters actually did, participated in the hip-hop dancing, is that correct? Oh.
Joe did.
Oh, Joe did. So, my information was a grandchildren, but now we know it's you. Okay. And then the other, and this is one we've been excited to, you know, be, know that it's finally going to open, that's Harkins. So, for the public, and if the public's listening, it'll actually be next Thursday, October 13th. So, that grand opening will start the ribbon cutting at 5:00 PM. Again, this is a public event. And doors will open at 6:00 PM and stay open until close. Now, I don't know what time close is in the evening. And then, grand opening celebration will actually go through the entire weekend, starting at 10:00 AM, Friday through Sunday. So, it's, it's here, it's opening, we're excited. And we do have a special council meeting this Friday, is it, this Friday, for their use, or their liquor license. So, that's one to, thank you for council's support of that as well. That's all I have, and don't know if there are any follow-up items.
Is there any follow-up actions? Or any questions for the city manager? No, you're getting off easy today. Okay, so, no inquiries to staff? Nope. Okay, so, our next meeting will be that special meeting on Friday, October 7th, at 9:30 AM, and that'll be held in City Hall in room 212. So, no further business, we are going to adjourn this meeting at 6:59.